Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll open the meeting up. Can we please rise for the pledge?
For your allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands by our nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just for all.
Let's just remain standing. Just a quick moment of silence for the tragedies that are happening out in California. I mean, I don't think we realize how severe an impact that's having on all the residents of the California, Los Angeles area with those devastating fires. So just a moment of silence for all those people impacted and all the lives that are lost. Thank you. Okay, we'll open the meeting up to public comment. Public comment is for the front end of our agenda, which would be the agenda items only. If you have anything, just state your name and shout it out. Okay, we'll close public comment. We have a special presentation this evening, Leaders of the Pack. I'll ask the elementary school to come up first.
Good evening, everyone. It's my first time doing this, so. Hi. So, good evening. We're gonna introduce Tenley Esposito up here. Hi, Tenley. So, your teacher, Mrs. Sholick, she said, "Tenley is always bright and cheerful when she enters the classroom in the morning. She gets right to work and consistently gives her best effort in everything she does, showing great effort and determination. Not only is she hardworking, but she is also kind, caring, and respectful towards her classmates and teachers. Tenley's positive attitude and willingness to help others learn creates a friendly classroom environment." Tenley met Mr. Ferrer this week when she, Mrs. Sholick, introduced him as the superintendent of our district. She followed up by asking if she knew what that meant and what his job was. She followed up by saying, "I know, he is the one that decides if we have a snow day." Beth, her art teacher, said, "Tenley loves art. She's always so excited to come to class. She's attentive and interested. She carefully crafts her work and truly thinks about her artistic choices. It's a pleasure to teach her." Ms. Petraschak, your library teacher, she said, "Tenley is such a wonderful addition to our Husky family. She is positive, sincere, helpful, and a fantastic role model for her classmates and fellow students. And you have a love for learning and reading that's infectious." Mrs. Canos, the P.E. teacher, she said, "Tenley Esposito allows, always gives 100% in physical education, and she leads by example, and her enthusiasm for the subject matter is contagious to her classmates." Congratulations, Tenley.
Okay, congratulations. Okay, our middle school.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to introduce Tanya Perez Perez as our middle school leader of the pack. Many of your teachers have so many wonderful things to say about you. Mr. Banks, your technology teacher, said, "Tanya is an incredibly hard worker who is always putting effort into her work. She is always respectful in class and will help out her classmates around her. Her willingness to go above and beyond, whether through extra research or helping peers, is truly impressive. It's clear that she is committed to not only her own growth, but also to creating a positive, engaging learning environment for everyone. Keep up the amazing work." Mr. Weaver said, "Tanya's maturity is what sets her apart. She's hardworking, prepared, and always willing to help out a peer that needs help." Mrs. Leahy, your English teacher, said that, "Tanya has outstanding personal and academic integrity. She demonstrates this daily in class by always having her work thoughtfully completed, and she observes you helping those around you. When Tanya wrote a creative short story, she went above and beyond, writing much more than required, and sincerely invested her creative talents and skills in the assignment. Tanya has top-notch manners, always speaking to her peers and staff with respect and sincerity. Tanya's a true scholar and a role model for all middle school students." Mrs. Jansen, your math teacher, says that, "Tanya strives for academic success and is always willing to help a peer. She comes to class every day with a positive attitude and ready to learn." Mr. Welsh, your French teacher, said that, "Tanya is a diligent, kind, and thoughtful person. She excels in French class and works well with her peers. I'm excited to see what she will accomplish in the future, because I know she will do great things." And finally, Mr. Brenney says that, "Tanya is one of the most impressive students I have ever had the honor to teach. The best word to describe her is disciplined. Whether it is in school, academically, or out of school, during her pursuit of becoming a world-class MMA fighter, she is always willing to do whatever it takes to succeed. One impressive kid." Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And our high school.
Good evening, everybody. I have the pleasure to introduce Kailani Angelillo, also known as Kai. I'm gonna share a few things from staff members here at the high school. Congratulations, congratulations to the other wardens as well. Ms. Loback, her counselor, has said, "Not only is Kai very intelligent, but just a joy to be around. She's very kind and respectful. I see her as a very positive presence in our school and community. I have her in peer leadership as well this year, and she has been a great asset to the club. She takes on a lot of responsibility for us and helps to carry out our project. She's a great role model for her peers and well-respected by her faculty." Ms. Ferrero, for Spanish, "Kai is an exceptional young lady. Academically, she excels, but her personality and kindness and warm heart are really what make her shine." Mr. Casalino, for Science, "Kai is an incredible student who never stops working and masters every skill. More importantly, she is so kind to her peers, often lending them a hand when they're in need of assistance while she's even on the other side of the room. She's an excellent choice for leader of the pack." Ms. Trapani, for Math, "Kai is such a delight to have in class. She pushes herself to go further in every topic being taught and asks questions to show her higher-order thinking. I am amazed by her intellectual nature and problem-solving approach on a day-to-day basis." Ms. Saylor, for Social Studies, "Kai is an extremely thoughtful and hardworking student. She holds herself to high standards and usually always hits them. If she doesn't, her resilience is even more impressive. Kai has an ability to bounce back even stronger and push through, and this is what truly makes her a leader of the pack." Mr. Tatum, for English, "Kai has been a joy to have in class. She possesses a rare combination of ability to be creative and has a hard-work ethic. She's always going to give a little bit extra, and her constant positivity and eagerness to learn and willingness to engage fully with every activity are greatly appreciated. A true leader of the pack." And lastly, Mr. Castellanos, for Art, "Kai is a talented and creative young artist. In these last few months, her work has grown tremendously. She uses traditional methods to create complex, personal pieces. She always keeps the classroom vibrant and fun without compromising her work ethic. And additionally, Kailani is a student athlete here at the high school, so she balances a lot of different roles." So, congratulations on being here.
Again, on behalf of the entire Board of Education, congratulations to our leaders of the pack. God well done. For those that don't want to stay around for the rest of our meeting, you're welcome to leave this call.
Thank you for having us.
Congratulations.
Okay, we'll move on to our consent items. They'll be from F.A. to D.5.7. And we have our addendum, which is C.1 and C.3. Normal, anybody have any items you want to pull out? Have separate resolution on those if you can. If you need any clarification on any one of the consent items, our leadership team can hopefully answer those for you. Otherwise, once we're all set, we'll entertain a motion to accept our consent items. Okay, can I have a motion to accept them from F.A. to D.5.7 with our addendums added to that? Motion by Tom, second by Heather. All those in favor? Close. Go carry.
So, I'd like to recognize in the audience this evening Grace Racino. She will be a leave replacement for us here at the high school. And she's not here this evening, but I do want to call out Mary Morano, elementary teacher at Elementary Retiree, is coming back to fill in a leave replacement for the remainder of the year for one of our fifth-grade teachers. So, she's not here this evening, but I do thank her for coming back out of retirement to do that. So, thank you to Mary. And then finally, our new high school principal to start at the beginning of February, Brandon Opitz. He was our addenda this evening.
Okay, and then just a quick follow-up. I know at the end of our consent items, there's a bunch of capital project hand orders and allowances persons. Believe it or not, they took some time for our support service team and director facilities, our business official, and the superintendent to vet those all out. So, we're in good shape moving forward with the capital project. All right. Your principal report.
In addition to my report, the only thing that I wanted to bring up was, and you'll hear this again, just to make sure that we get this out there, kindergarten registration opens January 3rd. Just an FYI, we've made a significant efforts to inform families by using social media newspaper advertisements flyers. We went all out this year. Flyers were distributed throughout the elementary school, sent to local daycares back in December. And as of today, we have 30 registration packets out. They've been picked up by families. Parents have until May 1st to complete and return their packets. Kindergarten screening is scheduled for May 9th. And just an FYI, I met with Julie Miller, Dr. Chester, and Kim Mezek to discuss the kindergarten screening process. We're gonna revamp a little bit. We've reviewed what steps need to be taken to ensure that the screening day is successful and inviting for our new kindergartners. And we're working collaboratively to make it seamless. Anyone have any questions?
Two quick things. One, I have a copy for everybody of our, it's called the Husky Highlight. It's our middle school newspaper. It's made by our newspaper club. So, I have one for everybody. If you wanted to take one of those and look at it at your leisure. There was a few, there's not too many kids in that club, but the ones who are there really work hard, and I want to give them their credit because they did a fantastic job. And their names are on there, all those were dissipated. The other update I had, I was going to originally put it on the calendar events coming up, but we were kind of unsure of the time based on some of the stuff that you guys are talking about tonight. But Sarah and I are working with our PTA and also with Town Lloyd Police to do a parent night. I'm gonna pass you a flyer. The parent night is going to be talking about, actually, I'll read you the little snippet. The HMSPT invites all, so it's open to every school, obviously, but we're kind of hosting it. The HMSPTA invites all HCSD families to join building administrators and the Town Lloyd Police to review the newly adopted. Again, this is, we know it's not been adopted yet. This is just something for you all to see, or soon-to-be-adopted district policy regarding mobile devices in our schools. We will discuss how and why a policy aims to support student well-being and learning. Additionally, SRO Officer Scott and Lieutenant Rolson, the Town Lloyd Police, will discuss internet and social media safety and include material about safeguarding your children's online presence. So, this is a conversation we've had. We have a Rolson and Officer Scott last year, and because of everything, it never really came to fruition. So, based on everything that's going on with the, all the conversations on our pending policy, and, you know, we thought it was a good time to do that. So, yeah, I'll pass you a flyer. We have not sent this out to parents yet. It's kind of like a preview based on how the conversations go tonight and things of that nature. So, that is all I have. In addition, does anybody have any questions on my report or anything else?
Thank you.
Hold on, no, no, Ian, I want to talk to Ian. I just want to thank you very much for a nice musical program the last Friday before Christmas vacation. Come in to hear all the kindergartners and some of the grades above them. Great job by your music department, go around, and all staff. They were wholeheartedly involved in singing all the songs, and it was great to see. Nice job.
Good evening, everybody. I only have two quick add-ons. The first one, as you see in front of you, courtesy of our high school PTSA for school board appreciation. They made nameplates for you guys, so thank you for everything you guys do. The second add-on, this past week, last week, on the 9th, it was Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So, definitely want to give a big shout-out to Officer Scott, who bounces between our three buildings. He built a lot of great connections with our staff, our students, and community, and extending that out to Town Lloyd PD, who make a very active presence in our buildings along with Ulster County sheriffs and state police as well. So, thank you to them and everything they do. Definitely does not go unnoticed, so kudos to them. Does anybody have any questions for my, about my report?
Thank you. Okay, our directors' monthly report. Anybody have any questions for any of our directors who are here this evening? You can bounce it off them. As usual, I guess our directors are doing a fantastic job. Never had any questions for them. Thank you again to all our directors and our entire staff. Okay, student rep.
So, the students at the elementary school started their new year off right by asking themselves if you could choose only one word to help you have the, have you best, help you have your best year ever. What would it be? After listening to the book, One Word for Kids: A Great Way to Have Your Best Year Ever, the students wrote and decorated one-word resolutions for the new year. These resolutions were put together to create a collaborative wall display to celebrate the new year in a positive way. Some of the affirmations created by the students included peace, brave, grateful, strong, and love. And just to belabor Mr. McCormick's point, kindergarten registration for the 2025-2026 school year is now open. Parents and guardians of incoming kindergarteners can stop by the high school to pick up a registration packet. The faculty and staff of the Highland Central School District are looking forward to meeting all the new Huskies. At the middle school, the month of December ended with a fun final day of school in 2024, which included an ugly sweater contest, an escape room challenge, a popcorn party for each grade, and a snowball fight game in the gym. The students enjoyed the festivities as much as they did the early dismissal. HMS students will be taking the New York State Computer-Based Simulation Test next Thursday to rehearse for the state test this spring. The subjects tested will be math, English, and science. Simulation is a great way for students to practice using the computer-based testing platform software, including all of the different customization tools and resources. This will also be great preparation for students who have never experienced the joy of standardized testing before. At the high school, Mrs. Matthews' choir class went on a field trip to the city before break. The students took a walk around Bryant Hart, went to see Back to the Future on Broadway, and finished the day by eating dinner at Paramus Mall? Or Paramus Mall? I don't know if I remember. Paramus, okay. Spirit Week took place prior to winter break. Students enjoyed the opportunity to spread holiday spirit. Some of the days included ugly sweater day, holiday pajama day, and anything but backpack day. Winter sports are in full swing. This past weekend, there was a big wrestling tournament at the high school. Highland invited 10 other schools to participate and play fifth as a team. Many wrestlers had individual places, like Jacob DeClaire, who placed second, Tucker Vett, who placed third, Michael Thomas, who placed fourth, Dan Hallfield, who placed fifth, and Imo Swart, who placed sixth. The tournament ran from 9:00 to 6:00, like 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and the wrestlers and volunteers did a great job of running the event. Mrs. Myers' college writing and rhetoric class took a field trip to SUNY New Paltz to learn about research techniques and find resources for their work in problem unit. The students were also given a tour of the Sojourner Truth Library on campus and got lunch on New Paltz's Main Street. I was on this trip, and we were allowed to access many resources that are ordinarily only available to SUNY New Paltz students, so that was great. And everyone left with much more knowledge about peer review articles than they came in with. Mrs. Saylor's community citizenship and action classes have been working hard to complete their community service projects. Seniors Bethany Childs and Luca Rizzo are planning a movie night fundraiser at the elementary school. We're hoping to do it on February 13th. It's gonna be animal-themed, as they want to raise money for the Dutchess County SPCA. And Amelia Del Forno's CIA project is increasing Interact members. And for anyone who doesn't know, Interact is the community service club at the high school. Her next event coming up is Congressman Pat Ryan's Valentine's Day for Veterans on February 6th. Amelia and Eli Martinetti are going to the elementary school to show students the importance of serving their community. And that's all. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you. Fifth and soup for Kirkham and instruction.
Good evening, everyone. I have one item for you. It's more of a reminder this evening. The annual panorama survey is now open. Students in grades 3 through 12 will complete the survey with support provided during school hours. Parents are encouraged to participate through various outreach efforts, including updates on our website, social media posts, and a reminder postcard, which should have arrived home by now, I think. The person who gave me this got it on Saturday. So, hopefully, all parents have received that. We do value all, input from all of our stakeholders, so as your feedback is essential in guiding future district-wide initiatives and decisions. So, please, if you got the postcard or if you're eligible to take this survey, please do so. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Zimmer? Dr. Boyd?
Before I give my updates, I just want to commend the elementary school, the main office staff, with our administrators and our new registrar. Having 30 packets out right now is really good. And the earlier we can get those registrations, all the families out there, makes planning for that day and planning for next year much easier for us. So, great job. I actually saw one of the ads in one of the papers the other day when I opened it. So, good, great job with that. With a lot of our, we have annual reporting, and now they are increasing to some of it quarterly. So, a push from the state has come, and I think from the federal government too, of a little more, are more timely reporting, and they want us looking at stuff a little more frequently. So, we are having some increase in some of the paperwork that we do have to do, that we are submitting. So, there's a lot of reports getting certified at the end of this month and some additional ones that were unanticipated. As I mentioned in our last meeting, we're planning for annual reviews. We have about 90% to 95% of our meetings scheduled for the spring at this point. We have a few that we are finalizing, and we will be sending out the invitations to families over the next week or so, so they can plan for attendance at those meetings. And lastly, tomorrow morning, I will be attending a training with some of our building administrators on high-leverage practices for inclusion in our buildings. So, this is a free training put on by our regional partnership center. Just look at ways that we can be more inclusive in our buildings and making sure that we're placing our students in their least restricted environment and looking at some of the new ways on that.
Any questions for Dr. Boyd? Okay, our superintendent.
Okay, so, it was mentioned earlier, but the annual rock concert is this Thursday evening at the high school, so please come on out. I hear former elementary music teacher Ed Flick will be making an appearance, and I think a former member of, is it The Voice or America's? The Voice. The Voice. So, that should be a fun evening. A reminder that we will be closed as a district on January 20th for the observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Next Tuesday through Friday begins Regions Week here at the high school. Next weekend, the 24th and 25th, we have an all-county choral festival that our students will be attending. The following weekend, we have an all-county jazz festival that will be hosted here at Highland High School, and schools will be coming from around the region for that. I know it's on the agenda for later, but we do need RSVPs from any board members that plan on going to Uxpa with me next Thursday, January 23rd, to meet with legislators. So, if you don't have that information in this evening, I think you're gonna be out of luck, because we need to get that in today.
Right, I have not heard from anybody. I will remind Ed and Mike as well.
All right.
Thanks. And tomorrow morning is fine.
Also, that same day, I will be down in Goshen attending the winter session of the Mid-Hudson Catskill Council of School Superintendents to hear from leaders from the state regarding the New York State school budget, or at least what the forecast looks like. I don't think we're gonna hear anything specific. I think it's more of like a forecast. So, that will be 11:00 a.m. in Goshen on the 23rd, and that's superintendents from around the region, four-county region that will be in attendance to that. We are at the beginning stages of budgeting for the 25-26 school year. We'll be meeting with our BOSI's representatives on Monday, February 3rd to discuss our initial service requests for next year. And if you have not seen it already, you probably received two emails from me with wrong email addresses in the email. My apologies, but our new website is up and running. So, I sent one out, and the dash became a period, so I had to resend it. And then, when I resent it, the link went dead. So, the website is still K-12, or Highland-K-12.org. But please check out our new website. It is a little bit more user-friendly. For some, they don't like change, so there are some people that are used to where the things were on the old site, but we had to bring the site into the next generation because it needs to be translatable. So, this new website allows that to happen. And that's all I have, other than our next board meeting is scheduled for February 11th, Tuesday evening, 6:00 p.m.
Anyone have any questions for the superintendent? Okay. Thank you. All right, under the Board of Education. All right, under Board of Education, uh, new business. First reading of our student use of personal technology. Policy number seven-three-one-six. Student use of personal technology. I believe everyone got a copy of the policy, the way it was read. Right now, it's a draft. It's our first reading. I know, uh, at our last meeting, we, uh, made some adjustments to it. This policy from when it started, I mean, we started working on a cellphone policy for almost a year ago, or a little over a year. I believe we came to a agreement on how we were moving forward with the language. I know we had some discussion earlier on regarding, um, the premise to the, uh, policy, that it deals with, um, all personal technology, not specific to, uh, cellphones, but as you move on into the policy, it does, um, address the electronic devices, the personal electronic devices from a building-level, uh, standpoint, both high school, middle school, and elementary school. So, uh, this is our first reading. We can approve in our first reading. If anyone has any thoughts of tweaking this at any point, we can go to a second reading, which will occur on our February eleventh board meeting. Uh, and I think I had mentioned this, and I believe everybody's in agreement, that, uh, once we implement this policy and it's approved by the Board of Education, that, uh, we will move forward, uh, with it in effect almost immediately. I mean, we could set a date, February first, or whatever it may be. But, uh, just to generate some discussion of where you think we are right now with, uh, the policy.
I think based on previous discussions, as we discussed at board meetings, um, and reviewing other cellphone policies, I think that what we're putting out here as our first read is taking into all the accounts of the board members, and hearing what some of the public had said, and reading other, um, school policies. So, I am good with the way this policy is written here, um, with regards to moving this forward.
I would like to take it to a second reading. I didn't get a chance, I read through it quickly, but would like to really digest it a little bit more. There were some things in there that I had thought we had tweaked, but I didn't see, so just, I would request it be moved to a second reading.
I think Mike has a question with some language, you know, little changes. I'm not sure how he's gonna skip that to us, to you. I don't think it was any big deal. I think we just working with Mike, you know, push something up. That's right.
Okay, uh, Jennifer, do you have any, any input?
Well, the only question I had that I wanted to raise to the community, to the board, is the language of the current policy talks about the physical presence of the cellphone, and I didn't know if it was something we should address when we use it to communicate between building and administrative staff, faculty, and students. So, this is a professional adult with a minor child, whether you have coaches or chaperones. I have a recent graduate of the high school, and I know that she would be asked to share her cellphones, that the coaches can, you know, do scheduling, or if she was being chaperoned on a trip, and I didn't know if that belonged in a policy, because we start to blur the lines of professionalism. We start to blur the lines of when they can communicate, and should we build something in that explicitly states we should be using either school-approved apps or third-party apps to build in that level of communication? So, I didn't know if that belonged in this policy, but if we're talking about cellphones, you know, the physical presence of it and how it's distracting, is that another layer we should be considering? And as the newest member on the board, I wanted to get the input of those that have been here and tenured with the history.
Everybody's input is, 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 you have to take it, you know, seriously. Uh, I think, from my standpoint, my issue right now is that we've been discussing this for over twelve months. And Jennifer, I know you're new to the board since July. This was out there basically as our first reading at our last meeting back on December tenth. I think it's been in our Friday updates multiple times. I, I think we can tweak this to address every item out there that we might think could, could affect it. But I think the initial thought of a cellphone policy was technically a cellphone policy was to, um, move away from what we're hearing nationwide, that cellphones are impacting the educational process. And what social media is doing, what the social-emotional effect it's having on students, I think that's the real issue of, of presenting and starting with a cellphone policy. Yes, we can. We can address, um, the use with, you know, coaches and administrators and teachers, you know, touching base with their, with their, uh, students on issues regarding, you know, practices and whatever other events that might take place. But I think, in my mind, our focus should be strictly on, uh, the policy affecting the educational piece of, uh, of the district delivering education to the students. And I think the cellphones from we're hearing around the country is that it is affecting the educational process. And I know Mike's initial, uh, take on it months ago was that, you know, it's taking away minutes from classroom time. So, uh, it's, we can, we can move to a second reading, but I think moving to a second reading, we should be able to put all our ducks in a row at this point in time, uh, immediately. So, if you have concerns and you want legal to address them as far as a standpoint from the policy end of it, the legal end of it, uh, how much more we can put into it. I think Mike's issue was more of the front end of the policy, where it, you know, addressed all electronic devices. Yes, that could be tweaked, but I think, you know, like I said, it's, the purpose of this policy is to take the burden off our faculty and staff. Now that we have a policy in place, they can address it and implement it. And if there's, you know, there's always that, you know, that way out to say, hey, it's in the policy, the board approved it, just like our other couple hundred policies that we have out there. So, nobody can say that it's not in writing, and then the code of conduct, uh, picks up from there, uh, which would, you know, be at the end of the policy, where it states that review the code of conduct with all students throughout the school year, and that's what we're asking the administrators to do. So, I think I'll ask you all if you wanna move it to a second reading. Uh, I have no problem moving it to a second reading. We move it on February eleventh. I would say we implement it for March first, and it's March, April, May, and June that the staff, principal, assistant principals, and administrators can, uh, move forward with it, and then full implementation will be, you know, September. But it will be in effect come March. That's my take. You guys can.
I'm happy with the first reading and making that policy. I think the issue that Jen is raising is, uh, is separate. That's about interrelations between students and staff, and some, some of the coaches aren't even, you know, really technically employees of the district, you know. They're paid coaches, and they're accepted, and they've been vetted, and this, that, and the other thing. I think that's more of a personnel issue that we might have to look at a little bit deeper, maybe have legal consider what you're saying. It's a unique situation. Thank you for bringing that forward.
As far as coaches. I, I, I think that's the, the, the way that that communication takes place now with coaches and their student athletes. I think what we're saying is, if a coach that is not an employee, a direct employee of this day-to-day, uh, within the school building, contacts as a student athlete, says practice is canceled today, I think they have multiple times during the course of the day to, uh, access their cellphone to see that text message. I guess what we're saying is that cellphone is going to be in their backpacks during instructional time. So, there's ample time for them to, uh, address those situations. And I know Janine had no concern regarding, uh, for the most part, juniors and seniors who are in the process of applying for, uh, higher education, and they might get a contact from a college, or those that are, uh, going for, uh, any type of, uh, scholarships for athletics, or whatever it may be, might be, uh, contacted by a coach from a certain college. But I think they have ample time during the course of the day to address those, and I.
We would hope so. I mean, there's anxiety that goes along with that situation.
Of course, of course. I mean, uh, but I don't think, taking away what we're trying to do with the policy, uh, to address those issues, we're gonna be spinning our wheels. I mean, this policy could be, you know, ten pages long to address every little situation that can occur.
That's why I wanna leave it the way it is and explore our options with that. Like I said, it's a unique situation, you know, that cellphone interaction, um, is, you know, you always wanna hope it's all on the up and up and to keep people from falling, you know, each other, you know. Shouldn't get reached in conversation, you know, or a text message or whatever, but nothing's gonna be perfect, but I think you, you did present the situation.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we're separating that personal space if we're having all these discussions about, you know, proper etiquette when using cellphones, when to use the phone, when to address it, you know. When you're at the food store and the person ringing you up just decides to take a personal call, like, we wanna, we wanna build that in. We wanna layer in that kind of etiquette, you know. We're not just saying hide the phone, or when it's appropriate to do things. So, sometimes crossing those boundaries with professional adult staff, having access to minor student personal cellphones. So, that, that's probably a separate policy, but communication separate from what we're doing with the physical, personal devices in the classroom. And I agree with you, Tom and Janine. I'm okay with the policy as is. I feel like it's enough structure that you can use it to cite when having to make, you know, certain policies in the classroom, but just, you know, open enough to be flexible in your implementation or interpretation of what the policy is. So, I'm okay with it as is, and Mike had expressed that some of the language in the first paragraph or so seems contraindicating that, you know, we're saying it's such a great thing, but now we're telling you it's super distracting. So, I think it was just a matter of semantics and cleaning up, but the, the content or the outline of it seems, seems to be what the district is trying to accomplish, from my perspective.
Yeah, I'll say, I mean, I think the substance of the policy I'm good with, it's really just a few of the beginning part. So, if it's the, you know, if I'm the only one, I know Mike's not here, so it's a little bit hard, uh, but if I'm the only one, then certainly majority rules, we can move forward with it. I think it's just the beginning part that I thought was a little contrary.
Oh, we can, we can strike some items from that, uh, first paragraph, or if you want, and, and move it forward. I mean, it doesn't have to go to a second reading. Second reading is if we are going to change considerably the language of the, of the policy. I, I don't think. Unless you wanna just move it forward as is.
Do you need a copy?
Yeah, do you have a copy? It's the second paragraph, really. We talked about using PEDs during instructional time, but then in the back end, we say we're not using it during, it's really that.
Which really has no bearing on the policy itself. It's just, it's kind of super.
And I think the second sentence, like you said, Jen, in the first paragraph, I think if we struck those two.
Sorry.
I agree.
Where are we?
They can't see what we're looking at.
Yeah, it's the, it's the second, the whole second paragraph.
Cuz we talk about using personal electronic devices during instructional time allows students to explore new concepts, customize their learning experience, and broaden their global learning opportunities. Additionally, as personal technology has become common today, the standard for student use during non-instructional time should be updated to reflect this change. So, it just talks about using it during instructional time, but then at the end, we give the guidance for each of the schools, and we say not to use it during instructional time.
There's not any wording in here that says, you know, unless the staff in control of the room says it's okay to.
That's not what we're saying. That's not what we're saying at the bottom, back end of the policy.
You said something about the second sentence? Was that in the second policy?
Where it says technological advances have.
You want that out, too?
Possible to expand the learning environment beyond traditional classroom boundaries, including PEDs.
So, strike that?
Under instructional purposes, the first sentence versus second sentence?
Taking out the second.
Taking out that first. Yeah, the second paragraph, yeah. Yeah, the first and the second paragraph under, or the first and second sentence under instructional purposes says personal technology used by students is permitted during the day for instructional purposes and/or in approved locations only. Teachers will indicate when and if classroom reuse is acceptable. That's really what we have now, but not what we're looking to move to.
Okay. So, striking the first sentence under instructional practices, purposes.
The first two sentences.
The first two sentences. So, it goes from personal to acceptable. Teachers to acceptable.
Yep. Personal.
If you read the whole thing, it's actually that whole, that whole instructional purpose, paragraph should be struck.
But do we wanna leave some sort of line that said instructional purposes include, but are not limited to approved classroom activities? Like, I don't wanna take away the ability for classrooms to be able to move within the boundaries of this. If we take it out completely and it looks like they can't, will they feel like they can never, you know, at the high school level?
But that's what we're saying, right, is that they shouldn't be using them during instructional time.
They shouldn't, and I mean, if you talked, I mean, should we put a committee together and get, I don't know if you have before, I apologize, if you have to get feedback? Cuz I, you know, anecdotally, I know some instructors may ask them to use their cellphones, do a recording.
Right, and what we've talked through is that we have, they have district-assigned technology that they should be using.
Not all district-assigned technology, I think, can do some of the things that they want to do. Like, I don't know that you couldn't record a video with your, um, laptop, I would say. I don't know.
Yeah, no, no, we've talked about it. We've had people, we've had groups at all the different.
Sorry, um, just, just, sorry. Um, speaking personally, I know that for my classes, like, for, for college classes, they will ask you to use your phone for certain assignments to submit on School G, cuz you can take photos with your Chromebook, but they're not very good quality. Um, so I've been asked many times by my teacher during class time to take a photo and submit it, so they have like a physical, so it's on their digital grading thing, grading thing, uh, grading site. And also for art classes, I've been asked by my teacher to pull up a reference on my phone, because if you look up the same thing on the Chromebook, you won't get the same results. You'll get usually stock images and not the reference photos that you're supposed to use for art classes, but that's just.
Is that something that technology can work, work through?
Those comments that our student representative just made, similar comments that I made last year regarding my, my student who was in college-level classes, who also was having running into those same issues, and I was told it's not an issue, but now, second year in a row, we're hearing from the student representatives saying that at college-level courses, this, the, the teachers are asking them to use their personal devices. So this is what I said last year, and I was told, no, 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 the Chromebooks can do everything. But now we're hearing first hand from a student who's in those higher-level classes, who are saying, is saying the same thing.
I would want to hear from technology in terms of why we can't do it using the Chromebooks.
All right, let's, let's move this to a second reading. But I'd ask each board member to seriously, you know, look at the policy, and please forward your revisions to it as soon as possible, so we can address them, put them forward to our legal counsel, and draft something up at least several weeks prior to our February 11th meeting, so we can all look at it. Just take the policy and strike what you feel in, where you want to allow. It becomes a situation, once you allow a staff member or teacher to use their personal devices in the classroom, that opens it up to every classroom. So we're pretty much back to that red light, green light situation, that it feeds the purpose of, of spending a whole year on developing a policy. So I'd ask that we, we'll move it to a second reading. Please, let's look at this seriously. We did at one point in time say we were gonna mimic Deacon's policy, which we did.
This isn't, some of his language is not in the original.
Let's, let's move it to a second reading. We'll prove it in our February 11th meeting, and then go back to the middle school, and their anticipated parent night for January 28th. I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, we can push it. That's why I said it was tentative.
This hasn't gone out to staff.
Yep, it's not going out to, you guys are the only ones who gotta copy that, so...
Okay, yeah. Because that will be a...
Yeah, well, we can table it for as long as we need to.
And I will ask, and I know, I sat in one several years ago, where they did one on sexting with cellphones, and it wasn't well received by parents, which was disappointing. Very few parents came out. So I'd ask if this goes out, that we really push, because it's the same way with me asking for involvement during this whole process of cellphone discussion, that we get input from parents, staff members. And unfortunately, here we are, rehashing something that we talked about for, for months. Brandon?
Andy and I briefly talked about it today, and Sarah as well. I said I'd be more than happy to stop down and make a collaborative effort, so that families can hear it from the high school level as well.
I spoke to Ian about it, same thing. We all, we all spoke about it, too. So everybody's on board.
Yeah, when we're ready.
Yeah. All right, is everybody okay? We'll move it to a second reading, and let's seriously put some time in. We'll ensure it will be well taken, and we can hopefully put one together that we can agree upon at our next meeting. All right, anybody have anything for new business? Good old business, mentioned reviewing our Board of Education mission statement and district goals. I'm not gonna read our current mission statement, Board of Education goals or district goals, because I've done that the last two meetings, but please look at that. I'll pass out. I didn't do it the last meeting, but this is what I had presented at our last meeting for district Board of Education goals. We can review those. And then, I, I'd like everyone to please, you know, pull together some of your input for district goals and Board of Education goals. They're on our website currently. They've been there probably for, who knows how, how many years we haven't, we haven't updated. So take a look at that. Let's develop some input into our district and Board of Education goals. I'll just read our mission statement, so you might want to revise that a little bit. "We are a diverse group of individuals who strive to engage our community in providing quality education by lending our experiences and perspectives that will positively affect the future of each and every student within the means of the community." Anybody have any comments, questions regarding our district goals? I know, Jennifer, you put something out a while ago.
Absolute draft, or commented, I can resend that out, if that's helpful, if it helps.
All right, Gus. Anybody have anything else on their old business? Miscellaneous, Elster County School Boards Association, we do need that RSDP by tomorrow morning. I'll be out of town next week, so I will be in attendance. And hopefully, I know they're invited, some of our elected officials, but not necessarily all of them show up.
Correct. Last year, I believe, it was three members from the New York State Assembly that were there, but not the one from our particular...
But they send their aides for those time.
Well, they actually, last year was an election year, so...
So they all showed.
We had, I shouldn't make that comment, maybe that's not why they, but they were there with their aides as well. But there have been other years where county executive has been there, a congressman has been there in previous years. Who's going to show up this, this time, I don't know. It is just a couple of days after the inauguration, so if, as far as federal partners, they probably will not be back in town by then. But either way, I'll be at the one in Goshen in the morning, and I will attend the one in the evening, so I can bring back whatever information they provide.
Okay. Anything for the good and welfare of the district? All right, open a meeting up to public comment for general item. All right, closed public comment. Motion to adjourn. Motion by Jen, second by Heather. All in favor? Thank you, everyone.
Mark, here's a copy.